Good evening and welcome to the Pullman City Council Meeting again by Zoom and again virtual for this Tuesday, January 26th. And Dee, would you please take role for the night?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Chapman.
Present.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Thank you very much, Dee. With our announcements tonight, we've been trying to give everybody updates on the COVID-19 vaccination process. We did that last week as well, the last time we met together. And vaccinations are continuing to move along right here. We're in Phase 1B right now. The governor announced this afternoon that vaccination supply will be increased by about 16%, and that's due to a federal mandate that's coming down from President Joe Biden right now, moving more vaccines out to all the states. The best place right now for you to find out where you're at as far as the phase is concerned, you can go to phase, find your Phase WA.org. The easiest way, however, just go to Whitman County Public Health. Just Google that. You'll find right away. It'll say Phase Finder. Click that on, and then you'll go to a questionnaire to confirm you're eligible for the vaccine, at least at this time. And then you'll be redirected to a new page to provide who is offering the vaccines. So in this community right now, Pullman Regional Hospital, Palouse Medical, Sid's Pharmacy, Schweitzer Engineering Labs, and Safeway, the pharmacy there, are offering vaccines. And so right now, again, we're at Phase 1B, open to anyone 65 and older, or all people 50 years of age or older who live in multi-generational households. And if you're not eligible right now, you can sign up for an automated notification when you do become eligible. WSU has announced that they are moving back to an in-person learning experience for fall semester 2021. They're moving in that direction right now. At this time, they're encouraging the three Ws: wear a mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance. And you can find out more on the WSU website. They have a whole information point there right now, just the same way as Pullman Regional Hospital. If you go to their homepage, go to the city webpage, we all have COVID-19 updates for everyone to find out. Pullman City Council is asking our community for input ahead of the 2021 goal-setting session. So you just go to the main Pullman website, which is pullman-wa.gov, and you'll find the survey link right there, and you'll complete the 2021 City of Pullman Community Survey. You help shape the goals. And if by chance, there's something there that you would like to talk about that's not there, then you can add it. There's a place where you can actually add on some different material there. That'll take place all the way through February 15th. Palouse Discovery Science Center is offering three- and five-week enrichment classes this winter and spring for grades K through six. Sessions will be held virtually. To learn more, you can register and contact at Pullman Parks and Recreation. I talked to Bob Maxwell the other day, Superintendent of Public Schools, and in-person schools are going just fine right now with K through one, and then they're also doing the second and third grade, and they'll be moving again for more grades as the weeks go along. But so far, everything has been been working very well, according to the superintendent. Those are the announcements tonight. Item number C is the confirmation of appointment. And I am recommending to all of you that we hire a person that we already have onboard. And he's done a fantastic job as Director of Finance and Administrative Services. He's also been our interim city administrator since October. And Mike Urban has done a fantastic job. I have been so impressed with his communication skills, his collaborative skills, the way he works with me as mayor, the way he works with our council. And so I'm recommending tonight that he become our new city administrator permanently. And I'm asking for confirmation from our city council tonight, so.
I would wholeheartedly move, yeah. I would wholeheartedly move to confirm that appointment.
Second. You've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Notice that, Mike? No one was opposed. Okay, I just want to make sure you saw that. Okay.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. I look forward to getting down to one job and serving you in this new role very well.
And as you probably have noticed, that we are advertising right now for a HR Director. Karen Sires, who's been with us for, well, over 30 years. She's getting ready to retire. And we want to make sure that we have our HR Director in place as we start looking for a new Director of Finance and Administration. So Mike's got that one all worked out as we go along. So those are some of the things that we're working on right now. With that, we now move to item number D. That's the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to read consent agenda by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Laura McAlune, our city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 12, 2021, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 102004 through 102072, totaling $1,988,739.52. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable electronic funds transfer numbered 12252020, totaling $58,022.75. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 102094 through 102151, totaling $186,350.7. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 102073 through 102093, electronic transfers 669 and 673 through 677, and payroll direct deposits numbered 66134 through 66408, totaling $1,234,838.28. And a motion to approve change order number two for city playfields upgrades 20-05.
Is there any item the council would like to offer discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items one through six. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to our regular agenda tonight. And the first item is an ordinance with a lot of different numbers on it. And we'll just simply say it's going to amend the codes. And with that, we're going to start with Kevin Gardis on the presentation, and we'll probably hear from Jeremy Moore, our building inspector. So Kevin?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Title II of Pullman City Code is the construction code. Title II establishes the Washington State Building Code as the governing code for building construction in Pullman. The Washington State Building Code consists of five model codes with state amendments. These include the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, and the Uniform Plumbing Code. Every three years, new model codes are published and then typically adopted by the state of Washington. All of the model codes have been amended by the state. Other applicable codes include the Washington State Energy Code, which is a standalone state code, and the National Electric Code, which is adopted by the state of Washington but is not part of the Washington State Building Code. Effective February 1st of 2021, the 2018 updates to the Washington State Building Code will go into effect. Pullman is responsible for enforcing this code. At this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to our senior building inspector, Jeremy Moore, who will go over why the codes are just going into effect now in 2021, as well as the proposed changes to city code. Jeremy, please take it away.
Yes, hello. Good evening, mayor, members of council. Yeah, just a brief explanation on how we arrived at implementing the 2018 codes in 2021. Historically, the new codes have been implemented every three years, which may the effective date, 2018 codes on July 1st of 2019. The Washington State Building Code Council delayed this effective date previously one whole year to allow more additional time for amending the codes and then adopting them at the state level. And then, of course, this would have established the new effective date of July 1st of 2020. Now, at the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, the State Building Code Council voted to delay this implementation November 1st. And then subsequently, they finally delayed it to February 1st of 2021 due to the continued impacts. And that's kind of how we arrived at having such a late date.
Do you want to go over the changes, Jeremy?
Yes, yes, sorry. Most, most definitely. So there's a number of minor revisions to the Title II, including references to the new code cycles where we simply changed the 2015 to the 2018 code versions. There were small additions to the list of building permit exemptions, mainly our accessory buildings to the single and two-family dwellings. We up the square footage of that from 120 square feet to 200 square feet to give homeowners a chance to use those pre-made, more affordable storage buildings that you see for sale around town. Then that will allow them to do so without a permit. The commercial accessory structures will remain in line with the International Building Code at 120 square feet. And then the only major change to the construction code is amending Section 2.10.030, changing the designation of the building official to correlate with the reclassification of the senior building inspector to building official. And I will, I will give it back to Kevin, or I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone would have.
Any questions? I see Dan Records with a hand up. Yeah?
Yeah, there's, there's really one thing that I saw in there that I just wanted clarification on. It's in Section 3, exemptions to permits. There's an addition of a, previously, the code cited the International Building Code with 120 square foot for accessory buildings. And now there's added the International Residential Code, section citing 200 square feet. So I just wanted to know, kind of, since both of those are kind of right next to each other, where, where is the difference between which one would apply?
Very good question. So the International Residential Code only applies to single-family and two-family dwellings and townhomes, not more than three stories above Great Plains. So your normal, everyday family homes. The International Building Code applies to everything else, commercial, industrial, WSU. And that's, that's the, that's the difference between the two code cycles. And then the 120 square feet for the IBC reflects the requirements in that building code. And we wanted to take an opportunity to give some relief, if you will, to anybody in that fell into the International Residential Code, your one and two-family dwellings, where they could have more of those affordable storage sheds, so to speak.
Okay, that makes sense. And I had another question on the, you know, there's appendix Q that was, was added in 2018. That's the tiny house appendix. Is that part of these amendments to the code?
So, yes, yes, to answer your question, the, the tiny home appendix is, is part of the Washington State Amendments. They are all encompassed into the Washington State Building Code, and, and will be, and will be part of that code cycle, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Brandon?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So I guess this could either be for Jeremy or Kevin. I just wanted to get a sense from you on if you've heard from developers, contractors, you know, we've talked at least a little bit about affordable housing in our community. And I had a real estate broker contact me, and then a local architect, you know, and maybe, maybe it's doom and gloom, maybe it's over the top, talk about soaring house prices here in Pullman, and how we could go, you know, upwards of $230 a square foot, you know, because of these, these things that are, my understanding, they're mandated. This is statute. This is something that, that is in place. But, but what's your sense in talking to, to those, those folks who build homes on, on what kind of effect that, that this could have, so that when we do go into goal-setting and, and maybe talk about affordable housing, we can look at, at some potential local options?
Jeremy, you might have a better sense of this one. Do you want to tackle it?
Yes, yes, I could do that, most certainly. Yes, to attempt to answer your question, I have visited with the general contractors and developers, and the construction costs do seem to be going up for all of, all of them. Many factors drive into that. With COVID-19, their supplies are limited, which is driving up the cost of their materials, unfortunately, across the board, not just lumber, but all of your metals and, and bathroom fixtures, things of that nature. So the cost of construction is, is going up because of their supply and demand on materials. And then with code implementation, it presents challenges. It does every three years. The contractors and developers are used to it, but, but it's still a challenge for them every time we get a new code cycle. There's usually a few more requirements. Again, at the state level, the revised code of Washington requires that the counties and cities adopt and enforce these new codes. So we just try to work hard with the contractors, explaining the code, let them know all their options, and, and any exceptions if, if, if it's applicable, so we can help them work through the new code cycle.
Nathan, I saw your hand up. Nathan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Jeremy, I appreciate you discussing some of the challenges that, you know, COVID-19 for increasing price. But I just have to point out that, you know, it's been more expensive and getting more and more expensive for a while. It's not just COVID-19. So I understand what you're saying. But I have, you know, some, some concerns regarding that. I would also say, this was an issue that, that we discussed, oh, I think over a decade ago, about code issues and navigating some of the challenges with our local codes. And now that we're adding, well, we have to add additional requirements on this, I really hope that we can help developers through that process. I know that Councilmember Bloom, when he was on, had some challenges when he was working on the Sanctuary Yoga Building, the Armory. So I really, really hope that we can make it as streamlined as we possibly can. And I know, Kevin, I think you were there when that was going on, that you guys did a great job at that time, by keeping the cost down as much as possible. And we really need to find more affordable options. People are choosing to live elsewhere because of, of our challenges. And I know it's the market, but poverty is a huge thing in my, one of my passions, and it's just getting worse. So just wanted to mention that, but thank you, Jeremy.
Very good.
Any more on that, Kevin?
No, it would just be our recommendation to adopt the attached ordinance approving revisions to Title II.
Okay. You've heard the presentation. Do I hear a motion to approve this ordinance?
Move to adopt ordinance 21-1.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I got, I think I saw Eileen with a finger up. That's their thumb up. There it is. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, I just want to point out for the record, we have to read the title.
Yes, we do. And that's your job. Thank you very much.
Not that I'm looking forward to this one. Ordinance number 21-1, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, relating to Title II, construction code, amending sections 2.15.010, 2.15.015, 2.15.035, 2.20.010, 2.25.010, 2.30.010, and 2.35.010 of the Pullman City Code, and Pullman City ordinance numbers 86-12, Section 1, 1986, 86-13, Section 1, 1986, 86-14, Section 1, 1986, 86-15, Section 1, 1986, 86-16, Section 1, 1986, and 86-34, Section 1, 1986, 87-15, Section 1, 1987, 89-14, Sections 5, 7, 9, 10, and 11, 1989, 90-24, Section 1, 1990, 91-24, Section 1, 1991, 92-22, Sections 4, 5, 6, 9, and 10, 1992, 96-2, Sections 2, 3, 8, 9, 10, and 11, 1996, 97-14, Section 1, 1997, 99-2, Sections 5, 7, 9, 10, 11, and 12, 1999, 02-41, Sections 1, 2, 3, and 4, 2002, 05-2, Sections 5, 8, 14, 16, 20, and 23, 2005, 08-2, Sections 6, 7, 10, 11, 12, and 13, 2008, 10-8, Sections 4, 5, 7, 9, 10, or 9, 11, 13, and 14, 2010, 13-16, Sections 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, 2013, 14-10, Section 1, 2014, 16-8, Sections 1, 3, 4, and 5, 2016, and other matters properly pertaining thereto.
I was waiting for that final line. Yes, let's give it, let's, let's give Laura a hand. Excellent, excellent, Jim. Okay. Well, we've had, we've had the vote, so now we can move on to item number two, which is an ordinance. This one deals with building official duties. And so again, we'll go back to Kevin Gardis.
Thank you, mayor. In 2018, the city completed initial strategic planning work associated with three city departments, public works, finance, and parks. As a result of this initial work, some changes were implemented in public work, such as reinstating the civil, city engineer position. Another recommendation was to do additional strategic planning work around converting the planning department into a community development department. In September of 2019, council authorized additional strategic planning work to include development of a community development plan, and community development department plan, and an MNO strategic plan. The goal of this planning work was to look at organizational structures associated with our peer cities, with the ultimate aim of providing better customer service. One of the recommendations from the most strategic, from the most recent strategic planning work is convert the city's senior building inspector position to a building official position. Currently, city code designates the public works director as the city's ex-officio building official. Ultimately, our consultant recommended that the protective inspections division move from public works to a community development department. With planning director Lot coming onboard late last year, we are proposing to hold off on that move until later in 2021, until Director Lot has had a time to tackle some of his other higher priority projects. Therefore, at this time, we are only asking council to approve city code changes to convert the senior building inspector position into a building official position, and then I would still supervise the protective inspections department for the time being. The building official is recommended to be a grade 18 by the city's HR consultant. This current senior building inspector position is a grade 15. The additional costs will be more than offset with savings by pulling out salary and benefits from the protective inspections budget associated with the public works director and the deputy public works director. It's staff's recommendation that council adopt the ordinance, authorizing city code changes around the building official position. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions of Kevin on this? Seeing none, do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Laura, would you read this ordinance? Now, this is a little bit less than you had to do just before.
Little bit less. Ordinance number 21-2, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, relating to building official duties, amending sections 1.18.040, 1.18.050, and 2.10.030 of the Pullman City Codes, and Pullman City ordinance numbers 18-25, Section 6, 2018, 99-22, Section 1, 1999, 99-24, Section 2, 1999, 92-12, Section 1, 1992, 87-18, Section 1, 1987, 86-11, Section 4, 1986, 85-19, Section 1, 1985, 81-10, Section 3, 1981, and other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we now move to item number three. It's a resolution adopting fees related to building permits, plumbing permits, and mechanical permits. And with that, we go to our senior building inspector, Jeremy Moore. And Jeremy, I think we needed, you're muted right now. There we go.
Sorry about that. Thank you, mayor. I would like to start off by briefly going over the resolution, R2-21, the resolution adopting the construction-related fees. The last revision to these schedules, these fee schedules occurred in August of 2016. The proposed revisions are relatively minor in nature. The basic building permit fee schedule remains unchanged from 1997 Uniform Building Code. However, the average cost per square foot of construction for new construction, the valuation guide has gone up a little bit. Establishing permit fees is typically based on this. It's the building valuation data published by the International Code Council that correlates with the adopted building code cycle, 2018 code cycle year. We use the 2018 billing valuation data published by the same code council. The proposed fee schedules represented in Exhibit A to the building permit fees has $25 increases to our flat rate remodel permits for kitchen, bath, and the basement remodels. And we increased the maximum valuation up $5,000 from $20,000 to $25,000. That would be allowing more work to be done under these flat rate permits. We wanted to allow people to take advantage of these value permits, if you will. They're, they're surrounded around being convenient and inexpensive for the homeowners, all-inclusive permit that gets them their remodel for all the inspections, plan review permitting, even encompasses not just the construction and remodel, but also any mechanical or plumbing work that is done under that remodel permit. So minor incremental increase. The residential re-roof permits in Exhibit A have also been increased $25 from $75 to $100. The residential re-roof permits in Exhibit A have also been increased twenty-five dollars from seventy-five to one hundred dollars. Again, we found that it's, we try to do small incremental increases on code cycle years in lieu of waiting ten, twelve years, and then these big, big jump in permit fees to, to get caught up to where most other jurisdictions are on the fee schedules. My, just the minor increases to those three permits. And then the other increases are multiple hourly inspection and plan review fees in Exhibits A, B, and C. They've been increased from fifty dollars to one hundred dollars per hour in order to just be consistent with the same change that was made back in twenty sixteen to the re-inspection fee. We had, we had in the fee resolutions where the re-inspect fee had been bumped to one hundred dollars. Yet we had a number of the other hourly type fees for inspections and plan reviews that, that were not adjusted accordingly to be consistent with that. And then the proposed changes to the plumbing fees in Exhibit B are mainly adding some piping system and fixture fee additions that captures the more advanced construction practices that we encounter at WSU. We were getting a lot more work, and there wasn't anything clear in writing to to encompass that in our permit process. So this, this will correlate with that that more in-depth work that we're having in the commercial and industrial construction. And then the remaining proposed changes in Exhibits A, B, and C are mainly addressing typos and terminology consistency throughout the plumbing, mechanical, and the building permit fees. And then it's staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution containing the updated building, plumbing, and mechanical permit fees, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Nathan has his hand up first. Nathan?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeremy, I was wondering if you could give some examples about how WSU's construction is being more, it has been getting more complicated. I know there's some you know, buildings with bioscience that, that fire has to deal with, of course, different training. But if you could give some examples, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to. So with, with the onset of WSU being part of the jurisdiction back in twenty eighteen, we started seeing a lot more complex construction. We, we see the global animal health buildings. I recently got the opportunity to permit a hydrogen facility. I quickly learned how to communicate with Department of Defense and, and how to permit something like a hydrogen facility construction project. And you know, we have a nuclear facility on campus up there. So we've permitted remodels at a nuclear facility. Global Animal Health Phase Two is a new project, but Global Animal Health Phase One was done under, when WSU was their own jurisdiction. And they have a lot of labs in both of those facilities that deal with everything from bubonic plague to now COVID. So we have a lot of, of advanced laboratory systems. And so how that correlates to our Exhibit B fee structure, are those more advanced piping systems in a building? Where traditionally, you would have domestic hot and cold water and your normal drain waste event. On a WSU project, we have, for example, DI water, deionized lab water. We have steam supply and return. They have a steam plant on campus. They do all of their heating with steam. So we have steam piping throughout the buildings. And then they have industrial hot and cold water that they use, which is non-podable. It's another piping system we inspect. They have chilled water supplies and returns. That's how they efficiently have air conditioning in all their buildings. And they have their own plant for that. So we get into permitting water chillers and then the subsequent piping systems in the buildings. And then we actually get across buildings with compressed air plumbed throughout the building for their labs and their, their hoods. And then chemical drain systems for those advanced labs. So we get, we get a lot of different systems.
Okay. Yeah, just to follow up on that. It's all right, Mr. Mayor. I think it's just important for the public to understand. You know, myself and I know a few other here on the council work on WSU, and I, I don't, but sit on the institutional biosafety committee up there. There's a lot of responsibilities that the city has to take on, whether that's with fire, inspections, so on and so forth. And while it's, WSU is a wonderful partner to have, there is a, a additional some additional challenges that are placed on our departments that would be, that are unique compared to other cities. So thank you so much, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? With that, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moving second. Laura, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution number R dash two dash twenty-one, a resolution adopting fees related to building permits, plumbing permits, and mechanical permits.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Item number four is next. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of professional services agreement between the city and Tool Design. With that, we go to Kevin Gardis.
Thank you, Mayor. In August of twenty eighteen, council adopted a slate of strategic priorities and goals. And under the heading of strategic long-term planning, this, and the subheading dependable infrastructure is the goal, conduct a professional study of bicycle and pedestrian circulation, including trails, sidewalks, bike lanes, and bike routes. The city's current bicycle and pedestrian master plan was repaired in nineteen ninety-six. To support council's goal, we budgeted for the study in twenty twenty, and we went through the selection process early last year where we selected Tool Design. We even got as far as negotiating a scope of work. However, COVID hit, so we just put it on the back burner until we had a more sure picture of how revenue and expenses would come in for twenty twenty and for twenty twenty-one. We're feeling comfortable now, and we're ready to proceed and move the project forward and, and, and start on the master plan. We have carried the study over into twenty twenty-one's budget. As part of the process, we proposed to form a steering committee similar to the approach used during the development of the CBD master plan. The full scope of work is included in your packet. The work will be performed on a cost reimbursable basis with an octo seed amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Funding for this project is from the street fund, and we expect work to be completed toward the end of twenty twenty-one. It's staff's recommendation that the council adopt the attached resolution approving a professional services agreement with Tool Design, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Kevin? Eileen?
Yeah, Kevin, we shifted a lot of people around here and, or shifted their titles around a little bit. Who, who actually is the project manager from the city on this one?
Right now, it's me.
Okay. Is it going to be you? Is it?
More than likely. Art Director Lot and City Engineer Haley will also probably be pretty involved in it.
Okay.
And, and Alan Davis will be involved because he has intimate knowledge of everything, trail system. So there'll be city staff involved, but right now I'll be the project manager and probably stay on as the project manager.
And, and my other question was about the composition of the steering committee. You're going to be hearing from me a lot on this sort of general topic. I'm going to encourage the those who are in this process to kind of look beyond the usual suspects and get a lot of varied input. It seems like sometimes we hear from the same people over and over, and I realize I'm one of those people. But yeah, let's, let's try to be a little more creative and kind of look beyond the usual suspects. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I just, a quick comment, Mayor. Kevin, thank you. This is, I think this is long overdue. I think what, what the date was nineteen ninety-six, so we, we definitely live in the, in a different world in terms of the expectations of multimodal transportation, and I think it was, it was crystal clear from some of the downtown master plan with BDS that, that we prioritize pedestrian movement, and that includes, you know, cycling, bicycling. And, and we've got this tremendous trail system, and I think this would really help to, to bring some of that together with the, the bicycle. So it's, it's overdue, and I appreciate the support on this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt R dash three dash twenty-one.
Second.
Second.
Laura, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution number R dash three dash twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the City of Pullman and Tool Design for the purpose of providing a bicycle pedestrian master plan.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with that, we move to item number five. That's a resolution approving the preliminary plat of the South Grand Business Park subdivision. However, before we start, it's time for the appearance of fairness questions. Okay, so I'm just going to go with my screen shows, and then we'll go through all the questions before we start talking about this subdivision. Okay, item number one. Does any member of this council have knowledge of having conducted business with either the proponents or opponents of the proceeding? Dan?
No.
Pat?
No.
Ann?
No.
Al?
No.
Eileen? Brandon?
No.
Nathan?
No.
And no for me. Has any member of this council communicated with any proponent or opponent regarding the proposal that is subject of this proceeding? Dan?
No.
Pat?
No.
Ann?
No.
Al?
No.
Eileen?
No.
Brandon?
No.
Nathan?
No.
No for me. Does any member of this council have either a financial or personal interest in the outcome of this proceeding? Dan?
No.
Pat?
No.
Ann?
No.
Ann, Al?
No.
Eileen?
No.
Brandon?
No.
Nathan?
No.
No for me. Does any member of this council know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in this matter or has an interest in the outcome of this proceeding? Dan?
No.
Pat?
No.
Ann?
No.
Al?
No.
Eileen?
No.
Brandon?
No.
Nathan?
No.
No for me. Does any member of this council live or own property within three hundred feet of the area, which is subject to this proceeding? Dan?
No.
Pat?
No.
Ann?
No.
Al?
No.
Eileen?
No.
Brandon?
No.
Nathan?
No.
No for me. Does any member of this council have any special knowledge about the substance or merits of the proceeding which would or could cause the council member to prejudge the outcome of the proceeding? Dan?
No.
Pat?
No.
Ann?
No.
Al?
No.
Eileen?
No.
Brandon?
No.
Nathan?
No.
No for me. Is there any member of this council who believes that he or she cannot sit or hear this matter fairly and impartially both as to the respective positions of the proponents or opponents of this proceeding? Dan?
No.
Pat?
No.
Ann?
No.
Al?
No.
Eileen?
No.
Brandon?
No.
Nathan?
No.
Glenn, no. And then Laura, I'm going to ask you, because it says any member of the audience. And it's, we've already heard we didn't have anybody on the line, so can I skip question eight?
You would just simply ask the question and then note that nobody, there's no response.
Okay. Just wanted to double check.
Yes.
Does there any member of the audience who because of the appearance of fairness doctrine wishes to disqualify any member of the council from hearing this matter? If so, state the name of the council member and the reason or reasons why you believe that member should be disqualified because of the appearance of fairness doctrine. And again, we have no one online. So with that, we now go to RJ Lot, our planning director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. This item before you is a preliminary subdivision of the South Grand Business Park. It is on approximately nine acres and includes eight lots. The location of the project, let me see if I can put that up here on the screen for those tuning in. The location of the project is on South Grand Avenue at the south end of Pullman, near the intersection with Fairmont. The applicant is Centier Engineering on behalf of South Grand Pullman Holdings LLC. The zoning for this location is Commercial Three, General Commercial District. There is a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. Each lot in this proposed subdivision exceeds that minimum. An environmental review was completed with a mitigated determinative nonsignificance issued on October twenty-third, twenty twenty. That is Attachment E in your council packet. Your notification was mailed on December fourth, twenty twenty, and published December fifth, twenty twenty. That was for the planning commission. And let me jump to their portion of the staff report here. The planning commission held the public hearing on December sixteenth, twenty twenty, to review the applicant's request. The application was approved unanimously with twenty conditions attached, beginning on page eight of the staff report. I won't go over each of them individually, but I will hit the, hit the highlights here for you. Condition number four reads, a sidewalk or path shall be constructed along the site or lot frontage adjacent to SR twenty-seven with initial subdivision improvements, including a connection to the Fairmont Drive sidewalk system. The exact route along or through the site shall be approved by the public works director. Condition number seven, a sidewalk or path shall be constructed along the entire west side of Carina Drive, which is the new street within the subdivision, connecting to SR twenty-seven with initial subdivision improvements. All required ADA curb ramps, if any, shall be constructed with initial subdivision improvements. Condition number eight, the sidewalk on the east side of Carina Drive shall extend north and connect to SR twenty-seven. The sidewalk along the east side of Carina Drive shall be constructed within one year of city acceptance of the final plat. This shall not be, oh, this shall not apply to the sidewalk fronting any lots with an active building permit within a one-year timeframe. And condition number nine, Lot One shall be dedicated to the City of Pullman, or alternatively, an easement will be required for the proposed public stormwater facility. Any public stormwater facility not located on city property shall require an easement. Said easement shall be clearly delineated with fencing or some other means as approved by the public works director. This proposed subdivision meets the intent of the city's comprehensive plan. There is a draft council resolution attached as Attachment H, and I will be happy to answer any questions or comments at this time.
Okay, questions of RJ on this. Okay, I'm going to go with Nathan first, then we'll go to Brandon, then we'll go to Eileen, and then we'll go to Al. Okay?
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. RJ, I have a question. So I'm looking at satellite view here of this. Now, there's a sliver that's going to remain R two, is that correct?
There is. Are you referring to the north portion of the subdivision? Or just above the, the lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that looks like it's outside of the subdivision boundary, so that will not be a part of this project.
Okay, so it's just, we're going to have a random residential right on the outskirts?
Yeah, that, that may need to be taken a closer look at at a later time to rectify that.
Looks like Kevin has a comment.
Yeah, I don't know if it would matter to RJ, but that's the site of our well, our well number five, I think it is. If I've got the number right.
Okay, that, that's why it's zoned with the R two on that one?
Well, I'm not sure it's, that's the right zone for a municipal well, but it, it, there may have been a conditional use permit or something that allowed it at that time. But there isn't a res, I guess the point is there isn't going to be a house there or something right next to Commercial.
Okay, and I know there's a house right up that road, so they've been talked to, or they've been contacted, is that correct?
Yeah, so everybody within three hundred feet has been contacted.
Okay.
Mayor?
Laura McAlain, our city attorney.
I just want to remind you that this is the final decision in a quasi judicial proceeding, and you can only consider that which is in the record before you.
Gotcha.
So you, you can ask staff to tell you where in the record you would find the answer to that. But I wasn't sure what you were looking at when you said you were looking at a satellite view, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you, Laura.
Okay, Brandon next. Okay, Brandon next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So RJ, a- as I'm looking through this, I, I guess maybe you can help me where it says that. All, so all of our, all that our report said was that staff answered questions about an undeveloped R-two artifact directly to the east of the subject property in the proposed sidewalk condition. So I, I guess what I'm, that, since that's all it said, I, I was curious what, what the question or questions were and what, what was answered on that. Because it, it's, it's unclear what that would be.
Yeah, I believe that was very similar to Councilman Weller's question from the Planning Commission. The small portion located to the, to the north or to the, to the east of the, of this location.
Okay. The, all, so it says all public improvements shall be designed and constructed in conformance with city of Pullman design standards and standard construction. So, so I would assume that that would affect things like the sidewalks a- as we've been doing?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so when it says a sidewalk or path. So I guess maybe you can help me, you know, figure all this out. So, so an R-two is there close, I know there's some residential that's down the road. When I read a sidewalk or path, I, I feel like that gives a lot of wiggle room. So what, what does that constitute really? Because, you know, in, in my view, a sidewalk, if, if we are anticipating residents that could end up being there on full buildout. It seems like it might be a good idea to do and in a commercial zone especially. So what, what could be the path that is, is being talked about?
Well, I think there's some flexibility there with the delineation between a sidewalk and a path. For, for obviously for pedestrian access. I think maybe Kevin could clarify that, that differentiation between the two.
So we often will, when a sidewalk has to go in or a path with a development. In certain cases, we'll suggest to the developer that they have an option. And so unless it's clearly a continuation of an existing path or sidewalk or something like that. In this case, we find accept, an acceptable equivalent to a concrete sidewalk that might be seven feet wide on this arterial. Cause that's a city design standard. Maybe a ten or a twelve-foot asphalt combination by pedestrian path would also be acceptable. So depending on how they, they work the sidewalk or the path through the property. Because they've got wetlands, they've got to work around, they've got the state highway, they just have a lot of constraints. And so we wanted to give them some flexibility. And, and basically work with their site as best we can to come up with a good solution. But from a staff point of view, we often find a concrete sidewalk in the right search situation. Equivalent to maybe a ten or twelve-foot asphalt path.
When there was, there was something that talked about the need of a sanitary control area that has to be maintained around a well. I, I wasn't sure what that meant, I thought you could explain that. And is that a cost that we assume, or is that something that is assumed by the developer?
Typically, it would be the developer. So all wells have what are called sanitary control areas around them, because you don't want to store a hazardous chemical, you know, right next to a groundwater well. And so for most of our wells, we actually have easements like that prohibit anybody from doing that kind of thing. Within that sanitary control area, it's, I think it's a hundred-foot radius around the well. So we just wanted to put the developer on notice that they're gonna have to work with that constraint and figure out how to incorporate that into their project.
Oh, okay, no, I appreciate that, that makes sense. Just for clarity, the, the report mentions Carina Drive, but I, I don't see that anywhere. And I didn't know if that was a little private road that was, maybe it's not na- like sign named or, or on anything. But I, it, it refers to Carina Drive in multiple places and, and confused me a little bit. I just didn't know what that was, if that was an official name or, or unofficial name.
Yeah, that is the proposed name of the interior roadway within the subdivision.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying that. Slopes were mentioned, slopes were noted in the environmental checklist. I, and I appreciate the developer said erosion is always a possibility. I, I know in that area, there are a lot of retaining walls for commercial properties. And, and so is there any indication that there would be a retaining wall here or something else that would mitigate that? And would that be the sole cost of, of the developer?
Yeah, that, that would be the cost of the developer, and that would really be taken a look at later on down the road when we do site plan review for this type of development. There, there really isn't any kind of development identified in the application. These are merely the creation of the, of the individual lots.
Okay. And, and then the last thing I, I think that I have is. The developer, the developer's paperwork says an intersection will be required on South Grand Avenue. I, I wasn't entirely sure what that mean when they said that an intersection would be required. I, I, maybe it's just a definition of an intersection, because I, I think there, I mean, there's already an intersection there, so maybe they, did they mean something else?
Kevin?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to take this, I believe what they're talking about there, Brandon, is improvements to their access. So they know they have to access SR twenty-seven, they're gonna have to coordinate with the city and what, and WashDOT. Because it's a state highway, and they're gonna have to improve that access.
Thank you. The, one of the contingencies I saw was WashDOT would have, I guess, a TIA of some sort. Who, who, who would pay for that traffic analysis? I mean, W, WashDOT says that it has to, I guess, review something. But is, is that something that the developer would, would do? Or would we, would we have that done and then we be reimbursed for that cost?
Typically, the TIA would be done by the developer.
I'm sorry, I thought I saw Kevin's hand go up.
RJ gave the same answer I would have given, so.
It is, and, and I don't know if this is worth exploring. I, I know when we, you know, have looked at things from a city perspective in terms of like an appraisal, for example. We, we may hire the person to do the, the appraisal, whatever company or professional does that. And if I'm not mistaken, we'll do that and then have the, the buyer or seller reimburse the city. Is it possible to, to have a TIA done and the, the city hire that and then be reimbursed?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Chapman, I just want to again reiterate, this is a preliminary plat application. So subdividing the parcels, there is no actual site plan or building permit. Anything that would trigger those types of conditions that you're talking about. So it sounds to me as if it's straying beyond the scope of the record.
Okay, ma- thank you, can I?
So we move on to other council members, because they have.
Hold on, hold on, Mayor, I, so let me explain why I ask this is, it, it's, it says in our thing that our job is to determine whether. An appropriate provision is made for public safety, health, and general welfare. And so I, I would agree that general welfare and all that, so my, my only question then would be about the safety. So.
So, but I would say that that would relate to some application other than the sub, the plating, the preliminary plat for the land.
Okay.
This is, this is delineating the parcel sizes, location of, of public right-of-way. As compared to traffic impacts, which would be analyzed in the context of further permitting processes.
Okay, because this, I mean, this does have in it that something like a, a traffic impact analysis would be done. So.
Yes.
To me, it's part of that same process, so, you know, I apologize if that's not the case.
Yeah, no, I guess when you're getting into questions about who pays for your traffic impact analysis and, and what does that go in? Again, I, I'm concerned that that's beyond the scope of the record. And that your decision is, is supposed to be based on the record before you. If you think that there is inadequate information in the record to make, be able to make that determination. The council's only option is to send it back to the Planning Commission with a specific inquiry on that question. But I would just simply, it, it, when you're talking about traffic impact studies, they can't really do that until they have a specific. Development plan other than just plating the bare land so that into separate parcels.
Okay.
So yes, you do have an obligation to make your determination on, that it serves the public health and safety. Specific to the proposal that you're considering.
Okay, so i- if, if it were to deal with, okay, we've, we've got a proposed business development in there. We, we foresee that that could, you know, potentially have additional traffic or something like that. I, I just want to be clear, so you're saying that that would not be part of, of this determination in, in any way?
I'm not saying in any way, because there are recommendations for traffic. It's just what I was hearing you asked were very specific questions about selection of a contractor. A future, future steps that would be taken.
Okay.
So if you have questions about the location of the road, the intersection questions, those are all relevant to the plat itself. But this is just the subdivision of the land.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So are you, you, okay, so we can move on then? Okay, to Eileen.
Or I don't want to tell Councilmember Chapman that he can't ask his question about the locations and things like that. What I was hearing was talking about a specific, specific to a traffic impact analysis and who the contractor would be and how that gets selected and paid for. So that's where I had the concern of straying beyond the scope. But i- if the question is related to the conditions that are in the plan. I wasn't, I wasn't hearing that, so if, if you have a.
No, 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 I appreciate that, and, and maybe I can offline get the, the, a little legal advice on, on that. You could, you could educate me on that even further, I'm happy to do that, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Eileen, you're next.
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, RJ, for getting, getting the map to me, it made things a lot clearer. And I think some of the questions that have come up tonight would have been already satisfied if more people had taken advantage of your kind offer to provide a map. Carina Drive is very clearly stated in this map. This whole process, I think, was very well done, I think we've come a long ways from, from where we were in terms of getting paths and sidewalks. Written in, baked in, as they say these days, to this, I wish it had been a little clearer on the map, now I'm getting picky about the map. But yeah, this was, I'm very confident that this is a very good proposal. This is an area where paths and sidewalks are gonna be very important, because it's flat. This is a nice flat location, and it's perfect for the type of development these folks are, are, are proposing. They do emphasize vehicular traffic in their, in their documents, but that's a little disappointing. But yeah, I think this was miles away from, from where we've been in the past in terms of clarity. And, and making sure that those, those amenities are there that will benefit the entire community. And bring commercial success to whoever chooses to locate there, this was well done, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Al Sorenson, you're next.
Okay, RJ, I'm gonna go back to the map of the project here, and I'm sorry I didn't get the bigger one. But just for my clarification in the small map here, the Carina Drive access to this property is off of SR twenty-seven. And that's the only way in and out at this time, is that right?
Uh, no, there, it will be a secondary emergency access easement added. So that was something that the fire marshal really wanted there to be added. So it may not be clearly shown on this map or in your packet. But that is one of the conditions that there be a secondary access included.
And can you tell me where that will be?
Let's see, so it would, at the end of the new public road, it would veer towards the west. And then turn back up towards Grand Avenue. So slightly to the west of the, this location.
Okay. And Laura, I'm sure you will stop me if I'm asking an inappropriate question. It appears to me that the intersection of Carina Drive onto SR twenty-seven and Grand Avenue is gonna be very, very close to where Fairmont. Attaches into SR twenty-seven. And that appears to me to maybe be a problem with public safety in regards to cars moving on and off. SR twenty-seven and Grand Avenue and Fairmont and everything else there. Was there any consideration taken into the positioning of that, because they've got the lots already decided on here, right?
Yeah, so I'm sure Kevin can add a little bit, but before I turn it over to him. I believe that the original design of the roadway where it intersects Grand Avenue. Was selected at this location primarily because of the, the creek that runs adjacent to Grand Avenue. And some adjacent wetlands, and this was the best location to tie into Grand Avenue.
Kevin, do you have anything to add there?
Yes, I certainly understand your point, Al. And if you look at the first bullet under Public Works comments, that's in the packet. It says access to SR twenty-seven and any required associated improvements are subject to review and approval by WashDOT. So they, they have prescribed distances between roads. And they'll have to meet all of the DOT requirements. We didn't get into the details of that at this point, but that's what that condition will take care of down the road. Are you still there?
Looks like his internet may have frozen.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna go to Ann next, because we haven't heard from Ann yet, so Ann, yours.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I just have a really simple question, not related to the plat itself. And that is, I then, I see the resolution is titled R-four dash twenty, and I believe that should be twenty-one. That was my only question.
Great, well, we'll look into that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back with you, if I could just finish, if that wouldn't be a problem, or I can.
Back to you.
Okay, sorry, Kevin, I just, I just, again, I understand that WashDOT, so anything that WashDOT would approve, I think. Then you're saying we would probably go along with.
Correct, the spacing, whether they have to put a left turn lane and to turn on to it, all of that will be worked out through that process with DOT.
Okay, just again, concerned about public safety inside the city limits there, thank you.
Okay, go to Ann Parks, then to Nathan. Ann? Well, you, you got yours on the R-twenty-one and twenty, okay, on the agenda I had twenty-one. Anyone else before we go back to Nathan? Okay, Dan, Dan Records.
Just a kind of a process question in, in general, follow-up to Al's. So Kevin, if, if the, if, if we approve this and then it goes and there's that condition in there. If, if WashDOT says they, they have to move the road, does that come back to modify the plat? How does that work?
I guess I would say potentially RJ might have another answer too. If the preliminary plat changes enough, like the access were to move to a completely new, new location and they had to reconfigure the plat. It seems to me they'd have to go back through the process again. So there is that potential. But until we get into working through the construction drawings, we really won't know, you know, what constraints we're dealing with.
Yeah, yes, Kevin, Kevin's exactly right, so it would depend upon the severity or the intensity of the changes. Of the road where it would connect with South Grand. So if the changes were to subsequently have a different number of lots or different sizes. Or something along those lines, it may need to go back to the Planning Commission before coming before council again. It really depends upon the severity of the changes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So.
As I was looking through this with the water runoff, um. You know, this is, this is rather close to the uh, Dry Fork Creek as has been mentioned here in your, in the document. Um. And I know there's some mitigation as far as I. Runoff into the creek. Um. My question is also with it being. Turned into impervious surface, you know, we've seen some uh, floods that we really weren't expecting. On the other side of town. Um. What is the likelihood that that may occur in that? I don't, maybe that's not legal for me to ask or even possible for us to. Look at, but. My question is, you know, we're turning this into impervious surface right off the Dry Fork Creek with the possibility of. You know, that that runoff going right into that creek, and I have some concerns regarding not only environmental impact. But uh, future flood potential.
Yeah.
So RJ, could you speak, I, I'm just kind of speaking my mind here. I haven't really thought out a question, but I'd love for you to field it if you could.
Yes, so uh, two answers to your question. Uh, the first is, is that one of the conditions. Is a wetlands report. Uh, that will need to be produced, uh, so that that those sensitive areas, those critical areas. Uh, can be addressed adequately. Uh, the second half of the answer. Uh, is is that any development within the one percent annual flood zone as delineated on FEMA maps. Uh, would be uh, scrutinized or looked at a little bit closer once those develops. Uh, developments come forward to the city uh, during site plan review.
Okay, and just one last thing, there are seven, it's uh, from what it's saying, seven. Commercial sites that will be draining into the sewer. Area, correct? Is that correct?
I, I don't recall that off the top of my head. I would have to go back and and look for that information.
Um. It is, is. Be, uh, well, let's see, what page is this? Uh, it's underground water, so page fifteen. Um. Says waste from seven commercial lots will enter the facility. Is that facility able to handle that extra load?
Kevin?
Yeah, I might be able to take this one, RJ, if you don't mind. Um. Again, referring to the bullets in the packet, um, one of them is all public. Public improvement shall be designed and constructed in conformance with the City of Pullman's design standards and standard construction specs. We require that uh, stormwater be, um, certainly for a project this size, they would have to do treatment. And they would have to do detention and the detention attenuates the peak. So. Usually the impact from development is, um. With impervious surface, you get the peak sooner and it's a higher peak. And by retaining that water on siding and letting it out slowly, which is what we do with all the developments in town where that requirement kicks in. Um, it keeps the peak to the predeveloped state. So there shouldn't be any water coming off of this. That is greater than the city's predeveloped, um, peak for the design storms that we ask the developers and engineers to design to and. And that one bullet point that I mentioned at the beginning would make sure that that happens.
Okay, okay. I appreciate it. That's all from me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, Kevin, RJ, thank you.
Okay, back to Al Sorenson.
Okay, uh, just back to the the access road again, um. Just from my own information, was there any talk about them actually making access to the property off of Fairmont?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I don't know if this parcel fronts Fairmont.
It it doesn't appear that it does, so.
Yeah, so I I think that for ease of. Of uh, developing the the parcel that having their own connection. To South Grand was probably the simplest way for them.
Okay, thank you.
And and I do want to add one thing if I could, uh, Mr. Mayor and and City Council, uh, we recently added the. Uh, GIS administrator, and there's been a couple of comments today and previously. About the quality of our maps, so I would expect that in the future. Uh, perhaps in the in the coming month or two or so. That the quality uh, of the maps included in the council packets as well as the. Um, as well as the the presentation during city council would be increased. Uh, with with Sam Perkins being here. Um, or Sam Jenkins, sorry. Uh, so the, he's only been here about three weeks, but I would expect the quality. Of the maps to increase here quite a bit in the coming, coming future.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, then do I hear a motion on this resolution? Eileen?
Yeah, move to adopt R dash four dash twenty one. Second.
Moving second, would you read the resolution, Laura?
Resolution number R dash four dash twenty one. A resolution approving the preliminary plat of the South Grand Business Park subdivision.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And the opposed? For that, we now move to item number six, a motion to approve a contract amendment. With the Pullman Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Promotion through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. We'll start with Mike Urban, but Laura McAlune, our city attorney, will be spending a lot of time on this one. So, Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. As we worked through the budget process at the end of last year, the contract of. Uh, tourism promotion with the Chamber of Commerce came up as a topic. And the council wanted us to go back to the chamber and look at amendment. And by. In doing so, the mayor appointed to an ad hoc committee, council members records and council member McCall of. For uh, city attorney Laura McAlune and I to assist in working through this process. We set a. Very aggressive timeline six weeks ago and as per that timeline, we're back to you tonight. With what uh, we're deeming as amendment one to the agreement. And this uh, process has been tackled at the city level and. We worked through a couple of meetings as to what we were really looking to see. We have met with the chamber before they saw a draft of the contract. To, you know, gauge the receptiveness of what we were trying to accomplish. And that was a very productive meeting to the point that once we sent over the first draft. The changes that the chamber group had were very, very small. And so what you see before you tonight is a uh, amendment to the contract that the ad hoc committee is recommending that the uh. Council approve. What you also have attached. To your uh, packet tonight is a memo from the uh, chamber director. And there's some concern with the way that this came about. And that during their normal operations, if the contract would have kept going on and on. Then uh, some of the promotion items that they do, the advertising is often booked. Uh, a year in advance. So when one booking is complete and paid for and published. Oftentimes, and hopefully more often than what I'm used to, we're given an opportunity to reserve space. At a discounted rate and so locking that in. Is something that's in the best interest of all parties. And so what the chamber had been doing last year. Is doing that, just assuming everything was chugging along. So that's the. Um, point behind the memo is to uh, let council know that these are the expenses that they've already. Essentially committed to and hoping that the council will continue to honor. Um, as far as the contract goes and the details, this is where I pass the baton on to Laura to walk you through. Um, those particular pieces, but I'll stay on for questions as well.
So through that um, process that that um, Mr. Urban described and uh. Working with council member records and council member McCall and then ultimately with the chamber. What we came up with was proposing a six-month extension. To or an amendment that changed the term of the contract, not an extension, because remember that the contract went into effect. For twenty twenty one automatically when you approve the budget. So what we proposed to the chamber was that we amend the effective date to provide for a six-month term. And that during this six-month period, staff would be working, um. Mike and I were talking today, we presume with council member records and council member McCall still. Um, on a review and an overview and update. Of the city's procedures for allocating. All tourist um, or lodging tax proceeds, so that every. Every dollar spent out of the lodging tax revenue follows the same process and procedure. Um, which which I think will. Is is. Fully compliant with state law. Um, so that was the proposal to the chamber and that's what the whereas is in the amendment that's in your packet layout is that we intend to go through that. Process to review, revise and update policies and procedures that may involve uh, recommending code changes to you. But that's part of the process of reviewing it when we'll make that recommendation. Um, and and so then it's simply. That's the major changes that we changed the termination date from December thirty first of twenty twenty one to June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. Um, there were some other updates like Mike mentioned in terms of increasing um. The requirement for the narrative reports so that you'll get those monthly now instead of quarterly. And specifying that those reports. Which Mike had already worked with them to include the financial accounting, but laying it out in the contract that it has to include the financial accounting. Of all expenditures so that you see that. Um, and then at the chambers request, changing the date that they had to submit. Um, their requests for reimbursement, because remember all of this is done on a reimburse reimbursable basis. Um, they asked to change that from the fifth of the month to the eighth working day of the month. Uh, to give their staff time to compile everything that seemed to actually. Again, follow what was already the current practice. So those are the changes, that and updating the title for Director of Finance and Administrative Services and. Updating the address for City Hall, uh, but those are the changes to the contract. It's pretty simple. Um, the the big challenge actually will be uh, this team that you've put together. Um, working on the updates to city code and getting that done and accomplished in time to be able to award. Um, a tourism management contractor, a tourism promotion. Agency contract. For the remainder half of the year, um, prior to the expiration of this. Uh, this, this year's contract with the chamber, so prior effective July one.
Okay, questions of Laura on this? Okay, Eileen?
Uh, Laura, would you walk the, walk the group through the, the compliance issue? Um, because that's the, that's what, uh. That's what really struck us as a, of why we really needed to make a move on this, because. The way we were doing this was not in compliance with sixty seven dot. Twenty eight dot eighteen fifteen of the RCW.
Sure, certainly, Councilmember. I, and I don't want to say that it was not in compliance because we haven't had. An audit that's found fault with it. Um, but the statute is very specific that all of lodging tax expenditures have to be, um. Processed through the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee prior to the city council actually authorizing an expenditure. So and if you remember the, the budget process, that. That may have informally gone through some of the members of the lodging tax, but it wasn't formally presented to LTAC. Before it was then presented to the city council as part of the, the budget request for the tourism promotion contract. And then over the years, um. Specific elements of that, like say, for example, Lentle Festival, which is a very large expenditure. That's all lumped into that same budget approval process. So those expenditures for Lentle Fest were not being processed specifically. Through the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee before it came to council with the recommendation for action. And that's really just a process that the city had morphed into, um, over the years with. In working cooperatively with the chamber as the tourism promotion agency to promote tourism. Um, and it's, it's certainly a legitimate use of the funds. It's just a matter of kind of dotting the i's and crossing the t's. On the very specific process that the statute calls out. Um, for the expenditure of funds. So just like you approve, you review and approve. Every recommendation from LTAC on grants. Um, it's my belief that you need to review and approve every other expenditure that's been. Categorized under the chamber con- contract. So that's part of that process that we hope to specify and and just clarify.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I hear a motion on this to approve this contract through June thirtieth of twenty twenty one?
Move to approve?
Second.
Moving second. Motion to approve contract amendment with the Pullman Chamber of Commerce for Tourism Promotion through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Dan and Eileen, I personally want to thank you again for the work you've done so far on this. And thank you for continuing on in this committee. I appreciate that very much. Item number seven is a motion to authorize staff to pursue assistance to firefighter grant. And fire prevention and safety grants through FEMA. And with that. Fire Chief Mike Heston.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So FEMA recently opened the application period for two program areas of grants.
Mike, we're having a lot of audio breakup right now. Um. Maybe you've.
Let me try something.
Hey, this is working right now. Whatever you're doing right now, just stick with that.
How about now, in my opinion?
Yeah, it's good, good.
Okay, sorry. So we're applying for a couple of grants. The application period just opened up. So first one is the. Overtime for driver operator, kind of like we did with firefighter and fire officer. And then we're also going for some new video laryngoscopes to upgrade the ones we have, so. Total of one hundred and forty-three thousand nine fifty-five and we'll have a ten percent match of that if we give the grant. So this is just to apply for it. And then the second grant is the fire prevention and safety grant. So in that one, it's for hiring, we're gonna hire, we're going to train four of our people. As fire inspectors, fire inspector one. Currently, we only have two people that are certified in that and that's the fire marshal and assistant fire marshal. So. All the inspections we do, we get very little credit for those as firefighters do them towards our. WSRB rating, so this will allow us to get. Full. Full uh, points for our certification when we do these inspections. So. Those are the two grant areas that we're applying for. Happy to answer any questions before my video goes out again.
Oh, you were, you were doing fine with the video. It was just the audio that we're having some problems with.
Oh, yeah, my audio started.
You're, you're doing fine. So any questions of the fire chief? I see Al Sorenson, okay?
Uh, just real quick, Mike, I, as you know, appreciate so much everything we do. To help with our rating with Washington State Rating Survey Bureau, and I don't think the general public really understands. Uh, Ann certainly does, uh, in regards to. Us having a better rating makes everybody's insurance go down. Okay, so uh, anything we can do that like this that is gonna help us with our rating, I'm certainly a hundred percent behind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not. Do I hear a motion on item number seven?
Move to approve, uh, authorizing, um, these grants to go forward. Second.
Moving second, motion authorize staff to pursue assistance to firefighter grant AFG and fire prevention and safety. Grants through FEMA. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we now move to item number eight, the notice of intent to annex real property, Bishop Christopher Annexation. Back to RJ Lot.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello once again, Council. This item on your agenda for this evening is. A notice of intent to annex real property. Uh, the size of the annex, a proposed annexation is approximately one hundred and nineteen acres. It is located on. South Grand Avenue. Uh, almost immediately adjacent, or it is adjacent to the subdivision that we just spoke about a few minutes ago. So the subdivision for reference would be to the north and to the east. Of this location. Uh, this item did go before the planning commission in December. And it was approved with one, uh, or it did have a, a recommendation to city council. Uh, by a, a vote of seven to one with uh. uh, by a, a vote of seven to one with, uh, Planning Commissioner Anderson opposed to the recommendation. The recommendation does come to the city council with a few, uh, conditions attached to it. Uh, I'll go over those here briefly. Number one, the petitioner shall assume his proportionate share of city indebtedness upon annexation is determined by the city's Director of Finance and Administrative Services. Uh, number two, the petitioner shall accept the assignment of a C3 general commercial zoning designation where the subject property become effective immediately upon annexation. Uh, number three, prior to the city council, uh, public hearing on this annexation proposal, the petitioner shall initiate proceedings for annexation to Whitman County Hospital District Number 1A. And number four, the upper portions of the site will need analysis to determine how it can be disturbed by the city water system. Location may need a water tank or booster pump sites. Number five, development of a street which would eventually extend to the far south boundary of city limits that would allow a connection to the future south bypass alignment and grades. And lastly, two accesses to and from this property from an existing city street should be planned in future development. Planning staff did receive one letter, uh, from a, uh, property owner that is within this proposed annexation. Uh, his letter is included in the, uh, council packet. I did want to address one of his concerns about the pre-zone. Uh, the pre-zone of C3 was approved by city council, I believe, back in 2013 and was not up for my discretionary change. So, uh, at this time, it remains a C3 pre-zone. Uh, if there's any questions, uh, I would be happy to answer them at this time.
And, and Parks, nice. And then we'll go to Al. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, RJ. I did have a question about that letter from that resident because I was wondering, and again, this may not be the place to talk about this. Because it may have to do more with when the land is actually developed. But he did, the little property owner did, um, express concern about, uh, there's, doesn't seem to be a plan for buffers or any sort of, um, um, protection from his property. So I, is that, is that addressed here or why, not by us, but, or is that a future concern that we would, that either we are planning would, would deal with?
Well, I, and I think maybe Laura could correct me if I'm wrong, but the next step in this process uh, is a public hearing with a petition to annex. So perhaps those, uh, kind of questions could be answered at that time. And the lander could come forward with his concerns. I just wanted to include his, uh, letter, uh, so that we acknowledged his, his efforts to contact us.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Al Sorenson.
RJ, um, I'm, uh, I'm very, uh, curious and concerned about the edge of this and where the south bypass may or may not intersect this property.
Yes. So the south bypass, it's not shown on here and maybe it should have been. So I apologize for that. So the south bypass would bisect the southern portion of this property.
Okay, we need to make sure, uh, and I'm, I, I think we already have that kind of drawn in somewhere. And, uh, whatever they were to do with this, they need to know that that's gonna go through there, right?
Yes, and that was discussed, uh, during the planning commission meeting back in December. So the, uh, the petitioner is aware of that.
Okay, we just want to make sure that if this happens, you know, we're, we're continuing to push more and more for that south bypass. I think most people would agree with me. Um, and, uh, you know, this might be another section that's able to get built, early on, which might actually kickstart us a little bit more, but I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of this, that it goes through this property.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Nathan, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. RJ, I know I've had a lot of questions for you and, uh, so, sorry, but I have another one. Um, Al, I really appreciate your point on that. I think also, when I was looking at the map you provided, RJ, there's an R, now let me make sure, R2 sandwiched between two C3s, is that right? Or the, the current one is going to be C3? And it's being sand, that R2 is kind of like an island there. Is it, it, I don't know, when we've had other properties along those lines, I mean, it seems, it seems a little odd, odd positioning for another C3. I'm just bringing that up. Was, was there a reasoning? We went with a C3, not an R, or along those lines?
Uh, in, in that, uh, location, I believe that the R2 zone to the west uh, covers some existing residential development. Uh, whereas this C3 pre-zone is largely, uh, agricultural land and undeveloped. Now, the reason, the reason that the, uh, property owner, uh, is included with this, with his residences, is that we would not want to create a donut hole annexation. So, uh, therefore his property was included in this process.
Okay.
And again, there's going to be, there's going to be a hearing on this.
Yes. So if this is approved, uh, by motion this evening, it would, uh, move forward to a, a public hearing with a petition to annex.
Okay. All right. Thank you, RJ.
Yes.
Other comments or questions? Okay. Then do I hear a motion on this item number eight, a notice to intent to annex real property?
Uh, move to approve the notice?
Okay. I hear a second.
Second.
Again, this is notice to intent to annex real property, the Bishop Criffield Annexation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we now move to item number nine. Another notice of intent to annex real property, the Nelson Partners Annexation. Once again, RJ.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, once again, thank you, uh, City Council. So this is, uh, another, uh, notice of intent to annex. This is for approximately 48 acres. I'm trying to get the map to come up here. It's giving me some different technical difficulties. So, uh, this is a, uh, proposal to annex, uh, 48 acres. It's, it's off of Southeast Johnson Road near the intersection of Bishop Boulevard. The pre-zone for this location is R3 and for reference, there is uh, 29 dwelling units per acre allowed in the R3 zone for, uh, your consideration. That's not working for me here. Here we go. There we go. So you should be able to see on your screen, uh, the location here is just off of Johnson, Johnson Road. Uh, with, near the intersection of Bu- Bishop Boulevard. Uh, the applicants have uh, stated that access to the lot would be through a, an adjacent lot here in the R four zone that would give them access directly to Johnson Road. Uh, this item, uh, once again, was heard before the planning commission at their December meeting and was given a unanimous approval, uh, with three conditions uh, from the planning commission, and I'll read those now. Uh, the petitioner shall assume its proportionate share of city indebtedness upon annexation as determined by the city's Director of Finance and Administrative Services. Number two, the petitioner shall accept the assignment of R3 medium density multi-family residential zoning designations where the subject property become effective immediately upon annexation. Uh, and lastly, prior to city council public hearing on this annexation proposal, the petitioner shall initiate proceedings for annexation to Whitman County Hospital District Number 1A. Uh, there was no public input, uh, there was no neighboring, uh, letters or anything of that sort that was considered at the planning commission. And once again, if this is approved by motion this evening, it would go to a public hearing with a petition to annex. Uh, if there's any questions, I can answer those at this time.
See Al's hand up, but I don't see the rest of the council because of the, uh, screen share here. But Al, let's start with you.
So RJ, I'm gonna go back to the south bypass question here. And I, I think it would actually be great if, uh, in future things on the south end or just outside of town, we had those lines drawn in there for us. That would be, uh, really helpful because if I'm, if I recall correctly, without having it in front of me, I think part of it might actually be going through this development also. Have you?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that on my map here that I've got here in my office wall, uh, but I agree with you. And in future, future maps, we'll be sure to show either the north or the south bypass and, uh, future considerations.
So do, do you think it actually goes through part of this or not?
Uh, Kevin, could you, could you help me out on this one if you're there?
No, it goes pretty close to the old Moscow Highway. And it's coming down right behind this, uh, center cinema because of the new community action center apartment complex. That's the south bypass road. That's up at Kevin Kirkman's business.
In his development, part of that road.
It would come right down there. It would cross Johnson. But I, I defer to the engineer, Kevin.
Um, I can't give you a definitive answer, unfortunately, but I remember looking at this before when this piece of property was talked about a year or two ago. Um, and it seemed like the south bypass kind of just clipped the periphery of it, Al, and didn't like bisected like on the other ones. But in the future, we're to show that on the map so you can see it.
I think it's super important that as these people are bringing these properties to us to annex into the city, uh, that they understand, uh, that plan. And, and you know, uh, I'm not gonna make an excuse for somebody about doing their research ahead of time, but as we know, that doesn't always happen. Uh, and then people go and do things and then they find something else out after the fact. So I think it's really important that if we do decide to go ahead and accept this intent, that, you know, all of these things on both these two, I know we already finished talking about the other one, Laura. But, um, we just need to make sure that they know what those requirements may or may not be going through those properties. And, um, as I've done before and in the past, I think we need to make sure that if that happens, that the construction of that road be built to this construction that it will need to be as we do the south bypass. Because every, you've always said, this is gonna get built by the developers as we go along in sections. And so we need to make, make sure that they know that that could be a requirement when this happens.
I agree.
Okay, Eileen.
Yeah, I, I, I echo exactly what, uh, what Al just said, and especially as they, uh, as they do, uh, residential development on this, we've had some real heartache. Um, in these council chambers about people who bought a home and started to raise a family and then all of a sudden realized that they were on a major arterial. And, and I don't want that to happen to, to any other families again. I mean, this south bypass, knock on wood, is gonna go through some, somewhere in our lifetime. So yeah, uh, very, very, very close attention needs to be paid to that. And to make sure that that road, as we're building the south bypass for heavy truck traffic. And people have to understand that it, that's what's gonna be rumbling past their potential home. And then that road has to be built accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, Pat Wright.
So I just wanted to, um, reiterate something that Kevin just said, and that this property is some property that we looked at about a year or two ago and had a number of people concerned with the amount of traffic that would be generated as a result of some multi-family, uh, dwellings here. And I just want to be sure that when it, when we get to that point, that we look at mitigating uh, some of those concerns, whether that be with traffic signals or you know, whatever we need to do. But that certainly was a big concern when we considered that other, uh, property a couple of years ago. Just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Uh, back to Al Sorenson.
Did you call my name, Glenn?
Yes, I did. Yes.
Sorry, I've got really bad internet tonight and it's cutting in and out. I apologize. Uh, I just want to jump on top there with Pat. Uh, you know, we did talk a lot about that and maybe even possible bull, uh, stoplight at the, on Bishop there, uh, coming off of Johnson Road. And there was a lot of discussion, Pat, thank you for that, on, on all of that through there with a lot of residential going on. So I know that that's your job, but I'm sure you think about that stuff, but just giving you a little bit of history that you weren't here for.
Thank you.
Okay. Brandon Chapman.
Um, hey, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, RJ, would you bring that map up again that just shows the?
Uh, yes.
And as you do that, I'll, uh, yes, I will echo what Pat and, um, Al have said. And um, I, I know when I read through, um, the staff recommendation that talked about this, uh, being in a growth area and, and of course, um, looking out, you know, 50 years. Um, and I would love to make sure that that is, uh, lined up with the, the roads being, um, where we project in, in 50 years for that growth. Uh, okay, yes. So that map right there. So, um, RJ, I don't know what the percentage of land would be, and maybe you can help me to understand this, but, uh, as I read through this, it, it actually said that the policy was to, um, and I'm quoting this, discourage the establishment of narrow projections of incorporated land surrounded on three sides by unincorporated property. So, you know, when I look at this, I, I see kind of like a, a mirror or a flip of like Oklahoma or something, and it looks like there's a piece of land sticking out, um, and at least part of this little sideways panhandle is surrounded by three areas of unincorporated land. So I, I, I mean, the, I don't know if the policy deals with just the whole land or a certain percentage of the land, but um, could you take me through as a planner, uh, what you're looking at when you see this and it includes something that all of a sudden is surrounded by unincorporated, um, land?
Yes. So, uh, good question, by the way. That was a, a discussion item that planning staff had internally. Uh, mostly based upon how, how that policy was written and how it would apply to this certain annexation. So our interpretation was, is that this annexation is, is covered by city limits on two sides, uh, more or less. And that the projection, as, as you mentioned, uh, by three sides on, on unincorporated land would not apply in this situation. But this was more or less a, uh, a parcel that was bordered by city limits on, on its north and west sides.
Uh, okay. No, that, and that's fine. And I, I didn't know, and I didn't know what the, the measurement was. I mean, the, the policy is what it says it is. It doesn't, it doesn't define whether it's a more or less or, or something like that. So I wasn't sure and I, and I'm not really sure if, are there any, any kind of adverse, uh, possibilities with, I don't know, services or anything like that by, by being surrounded at, at least in that little tip, or are we fine going in um, on the city side and it covers the rest of that?
No, I, I, I think that we'll be okay, uh, in, in that regard. Uh, the, I, I think the intent of the policy uh, was met. Uh, it probably could have been written a little bit better or clearer. Uh, but for this instance, I, I think that the policy was, was met by its intent.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, comments or questions? Nathan Waller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, RJ, I, I have a, so I just wanted to mention, you know, as we're, we're looking at all these different lands, it also means that I think Brandon brought up a good point, the service that's going to be needed to these outlying areas, whether that's bus systems, especially for in our residential. Um, those are additional costs that will be incurred later on. And I think as Al already mentioned, the, um, the road, the bypass. So, I mean, as we're making these decisions, I also want us to think, you know, the services are also something that we're going to need to extend past those areas. So anyways, I'm just mentioning that. I appreciate RJ, uh, your extensive work on this, really.
Great, thank you.
Any others? Then do I hear a motion on this notice of intent? Then do I hear a motion on this notice of intent?
Okay, I'll move to adopt the motion of intent.
Okay, notice of intent to annex real property Nelson Partners Annexation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And now we continue with the RJ Lot, uh, marathon tonight. Um, now, comprehensive plan update. RJ?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, once again. Uh, I wanted to take this time, uh, this evening to give the council. Uh, an update where we stand on the, uh, update of the city's comprehensive plan. Uh, I know that that was in the works for, uh, at least a year, maybe a year and a half prior to my arrival in August of two thousand and twenty. So, uh, let me share this with you. It's included in your packet, but those, uh, tuning in once again may want it, may want to take a look. Uh, so, uh, one-page memo to city council. Uh, and what this is really outlining is, uh, the process that I hope to, uh, go through with Planning Commission and with. Uh, city council here in the first half of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Burt Consulting, uh, which did a lot of the heavy lifting up to this point. Uh, has once again been, uh, retained on contract. And they have put together a rather ambitious and aggressive schedule, but I, 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 I believe that it's doable. Uh, so for February and March, uh, we will be having this, we being planning staff. We'll be having this, uh, draft. Comprehensive plan back in front of the Planning Commission for their, for their review. Um, with subsequent meetings with the city council in April and May. So the process of this update would include. The, uh, draft downtown strategic plan, which was put together, I believe, last March. So that will incorporate some of the, the aspects included in that. Uh, it may, uh, like I said, include some of the aspects, but what the update process. Won't have in common with the strategic plan for downtown is that they won't overlap. So the intent of this process. Is to have the city's comprehensive plan completed first. Uh, and then with a subsequent review of the downtown strategic plan. Uh. There's really no proposed action at this time. This is merely just an update, uh, for the city council. Uh, if there's any questions, uh, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? On this update? Okay. Then thank you, RJ, for that update. We appreciate it very much. Is there any new business from the council? We have already checked, and there was no one that, uh, wanted to have any public comment tonight. Uh, we did that prior to. Is there any new business to come before the council? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Second. Alls in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.